How are you? Is it in the neighborhood?
Okay, it's four o'clock, so I will gamble us to order, so we can do our business. Uh, so if you call a roll, please.
Mr. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. Clea?
Here.
Ms. Macbeth?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Schaller? Mr. Rogers?
Um, and I'm not sure if everyone was copied on these things, but Justin is actually teaching a class as part of his PhD program right now. Um, and so he, that's why he's not here, and Caleb is more dutiful than I in participating in convocation at the college. Um, but with those, uh, with that preamble, um, we are going to be looking at, um, second and third revisions of three different chapters, and so Carolyn, will you walk us through this?
Walk us through it?
All right, the first chapter is chapter ten, Public Schools and Libraries, and what I did is I made slides of the, uh, the pages that you have, uh, in your packet. So I'll start off on page one, and basically outlined and read are the changes. Uh, we added families and communities to the top, and we added, uh, the school system has a new, uh, plan, so we added the information on that. I had a comment from, I believe, Justin or, or Andy on the date of that, so I will search the, uh, the school's website and say they implemented their plan on so-and-so date, a new strategic plan, so I can add that if, uh, if that would be helpful to that page. Any comments on that text or? Where I move on? Okay, on page two was a continuation on the six points on that. Uh, I, we changed the text to read owns, owns and operates, highlighted and read there. And we changed the text on the two learning cottages that was suggested by planning commission in the last, uh, meeting we had on this. Any comments on those changes? No?
I, I was fine. I, I, I only have one comment deep into this chapter, so if folks have items to, you know, to speak up, so.
Uh, the next page, we didn't have any changes, so, and I hadn't heard any comments from anybody previously, so that's basically the same. We added additional capacity needs are anticipated to be primarily at the elementary school level, as there is a capacity at the middle school and high school levels, based on a comment at the last meeting we had to, to word that a little better. The heat map, uh, I will put that in there. She gave me a draft copy of it, and it was hard to understand, so we're making some revisions to that. So basically, the map will show the areas, the neighborhoods that have seen an increase based on that chart, uh, previously, and, uh, the neighborhoods that have decreased. Uh, the heat map she gave me was hard to understand, so we're working on that, so once I get that, I'll insert that.
Can I just bring you back to the, um, page four there? The capacity, um, at the elementary school?
Mm-hmm.
And I can be easily persuaded that I'm wrong here, um, but the phrasing, there is capacity at the middle and high school, is capacity, sounds odd to me, that there is sufficient capacity, there's excess capacity, there's, usually that's a word that's modified in some fashion, at least from my perspective.
Yeah, sufficient, I think is probably the word.
Sufficient.
Okay. And that's the chart of the neighborhoods, and we rearranged those, alphabetized like the commission requested. I might change it a little differently and do three columns, that's what I did. I'm working on the neighborhood chapter right now, uh, which has the same neighborhoods, and I put them in three columns in the neighborhood chapter, and it's a little bit reader, easier to read, so I'll probably do that if that's okay with the commission, so that all the chapters will run the same then with the same information.
Oh, yeah, whatever consistency.
But we did alphabetize them, and, and it's a lot clearer this way.
Yeah, I was able to find Indian Springs easier.
Uh, I guess this is always the danger of, of looking at things like this multiple times. I, I did notice this as I was going back over it. Um, it doesn't take more than a second, but it does take a second to figure out that the, the year, the most recent years are at the left, and the years in the past are at the right, which is just intuitively the opposite.
I was confused for a while.
You want to swap it?
Yeah, I, I think.
I figured it out.
Yeah, we all, yeah, we all figured it out, but it just, it does seem like the natural way is to go oldest at the left and current at the right. And that way you also don't get these weird 2019 to 18, you know, these kind of negative, um, going backwards in time, um, headings.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's nice. I'm going to rearrange it anyway, so.
Well, that's the only reason I mentioned it.
I'll make sure the one I'm doing now is that way. On the public library, uh, we, uh, updated some wording in that based on our last, uh, meeting. Also, we, uh, sent it to Betsy Fowler and had her look at it, so she's comfortable with the language in it also. So unless there are any questions on that, it's pretty self-explanatory, I think.
No, that's good. It beefed it up a lot.
The next page, we really made a lot of changes based on the comments at, uh, our last session on, on this chapter, so basically we added that, that whole paragraph on the left-hand column on the library and what they serve, and we upgraded the section on the right-hand side to make that, uh, read a lot clearer, so.
And this is just one typo per se, that when you accept all the changes in the second column, the third line of that big red paragraph, the L of library?
Yes, I saw that. I fixed that.
Okay, cool.
In the, in the original one.
Otherwise, we'll have an L hanging out there.
And it'll help too, when I take all the, the strike ads out and change everything to the proper color, it'll show up there.
Okay, cool.
Yes, already fixed that in the, in the document. I noticed that. And then on the recommendations, we added, they recognize the importance of good schools in attracting and retaining young families. It got left out, I think, in your copy. Uh, and Justin, that was a comment from, I believe, Justin on his to, as part of our discussion last time, so, uh, that's something you haven't seen. I think that gets the gist of what the commission said at the last meeting. And also, on the public library side, uh, we added work with James City County to either construct a new library downtown or construct in addition to include renovation of the existing space. So I think that cleared that wording up a little bit better in the document from what we had previously.
How about, how about just to tighten that language up a little bit, or, um, renovate and enlarge the existing space? And I, I'm sorry, I had to go back one page. I did just notice one little typo on the previous page. Um, it's a pet peeve of my daughter's and maybe all of us. Uh, the, the second line of the right-hand column, replacement of the facility at its current location, um, the it's is, uh, shouldn't have the apostrophe in it.
Yep.
That's a good catch.
Right-hand column in which line?
The second line down, replacement of the facility at its current location.
Okay.
Thanks.
So is that wording for those two recommendations acceptable to the commission?
I think it's pretty good. I, I might be inclined to switch to and either. Work with James City County either to construct a new library downtown, or, uh, what did we say, to enlarge and renovate?
Yeah, I could, or renovate.
Renovate and enlarge the existing. I just, I think I would also switch either and to in that first line, so it's either to construct. That's just too many years of worrying about infinitives. But I, I think it's okay now, but even still, that just sounds a little funny.
It's never okay.
So with that, that's all I had in chapter ten, unless the commission has other changes or suggestions or?
I think that's good. I'm glad we beefed up, uh, that, that paper, because that's so important.
Okay, according to the, um, agenda, we have, at the end of each, uh, chapter, we have a, a time for an open forum, so if anyone would like to come forward at this point to talk about chapter ten, Public Schools and Library. Seeing now, we'll move on to chapter nine, which is institutions.
Okay. So institutions, on the first page, we took out the and did the Virginias as recommended at the last meeting. I did change university to universities, and the chapter, even though it said university in yours, I noticed it in, uh.
That was one of my thoughts.
Right, and I come, I think Andy pointed it out also. And I added the higher education, I think Mr. Boswell suggested at the last meeting.
Everybody forgets about Boston Latin.
Don't forget that stuff. Rule them out.
Uh, on the next page, I added or renovation of as suggested, and did the two, three on Land and Drive for the Science Center phases. I changed the, took the IS C four out and just left the name in. Uh, changed the title to Cooperative Planning Goals. I think that was a suggestion at the last commission meeting.
Yeah.
So I did that, and.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt. So on that par, on that column, um, it starts out as William Ampersand Mary, but then, and that is the correct way to be referring to the college, but twice in the bottom paragraph, it's William A. and D. Mary, so those could be switched to ampersands.
Yep.
And it's pretty well consistent throughout the rest of the pa, uh, the rest of the chapter, so I may have found another one, but those, there are two there.
Okay.
Most of it's ampersand.
I'll make a note to look hard again, see if I can search it.
Especially it's better because you have William, I mean, City A. and D. William, Ampersand Mary is better than all these ands and ands.
Right. Okay, I made a note of that. So are there any changes?
Um, probably on page nine dash four, city boards, I think shouldn't be capitalized there. Because they're just, um, I don't know, I guess this is the copy editor in me coming out this afternoon, but, um, I'm pretty sure, because they're not, you know?
Right.
Right.
So the B is not capitalized, but city stays capitalized, or you want that?
I don't think so. No, I think neither.
Then, do you want to have that as the same, I mean, there's a capitalized city throughout this?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I think city in this case, I mean, I guess it's, it's meant to stand for city government, um, but I'm pretty sure. We need a co, we need a real copy editor here. Uh, I think it probably shouldn't be capitalized throughout this section. I think that's right.
Well, the, the words got to appear like a bajillion times throughout the plan, so we, we want to be consistent.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
So I took this as the, um, alias of the proper name, City of Williamsburg, and in that case, it would be capitalized.
Let's just leave it.
College.
Just leave it as it is then.
Capitalize.
Okay.
But the boards can be.
But not city boards.
The B of the boards can be down.
Yeah, yeah, okay. It's like my worst nightmare is copy editing by committee. It's just, you know, until midnight.
I'll hap out by not mentioning much.
On the next page, I added significance and took out importance. I, that was suggested at the class meeting, added echoes, and did some language changes just. And I also added, based on, I think, a comment at the last meeting, the enrollment numbers.
Mm-hmm.
So that was a chart. I found that on the, what, college's website. I planned to change the color to match our colors in the document, but I was pretty happy I found the information, because that was part of the information you were looking for.
Yeah, that's great. That's really helpful, and it breaks it down by undergraduate and graduate. That's just what we want.
Right. On the next page, everything was good, except I got one comment on cultural, and I fixed that. On Scotland Street. That's actually on this page. I think it was Cultural Cafe, and I had R A L and still culture, C U L T U R E, Cultural Cafe. Took it Williamsburg Shopping Center because it's not called it anymore. Changed the wording there. And I changed the, and softened the language, I think, and changed the language in this first par, paragraph based on comments from the commission at the last meeting. While the city's architectural review board does not review state-owned property, it clearly closely reviews the design of any new proposed building by the William &amp; Mary Real Estate Foundation. The William &amp; Mary Downman Association and other non-state-owned entities affiliated with William &amp; Mary before approving the demolition of existing buildings to make sure that the proposal conforms to the city's design review guidelines.
So I can play copy editor two and ask if, uh, non-state owned is a compound adjective that requires a hyphen in between state and owned?
I think that's a yes.
I'll just mention that.
Um, uh, do we want to, do we want to specify, do we want to call out demolition there as opposed to, um, you know, it's everything, right?
Yep.
Um, it's not just demolition, for approving
Changes. Asteria changes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is a bit of a lofty question here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I wonder if there's an opportunity to deal with, uh, what I guess I'll call deferred maintenance on some, some buildings, um, that the maintenance is so deferred that the last real option becomes demolition. And I just, I wonder if there's some teeth that could be honored in that.
Probably not if it's state-owned, but.
Yeah.
But on the non-state owned.
The non-state owned, I've, we, the, a good example of that is the house on the corner of Ri, uh, Jamestown Road and, um.
Griffin that just got painted.
And Griffin is being painted, and that was because I filed a complaint and had, uh, codes send them a letter, so. Seem to get a good handle on the few that are not state-owned, but the state-owned properties, we really don't have much say into the.
Is, is there the possibility of? I guess, speaking softly instead of carrying a big stick on something like that, I mean, we, we can't make the state-owned properties do something, but it would be nice if there's a way to, to nudge them and, and say, hey, just want to make sure y'all are aware that this is going on, and, and the city views this as a, as an important house or property, and can you, can you put a little attention on it? Um, so that they don't wind up needing to be just demolished.
We had some of that working collaboratively language previously, so I think, you know, adding, kind of echoing that again in this context would not be a bad idea.
See if I can come up with some wording suggested for next vision.
Thank you.
Well, and just thinking about that, I mean, one of the ways that the college likes to think about these things that, that we could just maybe amplify is that, um, you know, it relates to our outward face to people who are coming to the college to think about going to school there, and so everyone from the landscapers to the people who are giving admissions tours, to the faculty, to everybody, it's important to have that face forward.
Absolutely.
Um, and so to me, it is part of being a welcoming community, and the buildings being in good repair, and the sidewalks not being, um, short of some bricks, and you trip, and all those kinds of things. I mean, all those pieces are important. It's not just simply getting the best SATs or something like that, so in that sort of spirit of welcoming community, I, if there's some language that could be brought in, that could, I think that's the spirit that would be received well.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I didn't mean to suggest that.
No, 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 but I mean, it is actually something that's part of the internal mission, that, I mean, the landscapers need to know enough about where things are on campus, so if someone asks them a question, they're not clueless or blowing somebody off, like they, they should know, and the housekeepers should be able to know, and the, and the faculty and the students. I mean, we all should be able to do these things.
Can I add information on, more information on the traffic and parking? Just took out the install and did bike lanes on Richmond Road from Scotland Street to College Corner. Same on Jamestown Road from Euclid Drive to College Corner. Unless you have any more comments on that, I'll go to the, uh, Williamsburg Foundation. Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I saw passage. Based on some comments and information I also got from the Colonial Williamsburg.
I don't know, there's a, if it's not my dyslexia, kicking in, Burton Parish instead of Bruton.
Oh, yeah. Sorry?
Um, in, toward the bottom of the left, in nineteen twenty-six, uh, it says Burton Parish instead of Bruton.
Some of the slides too went a little wonky when I tried to convert them to PowerPoint, so that's why you see the A in there.
Um, another just small capitalization thing. I'm pretty sure colonial capital in this case should not be capitalized. Uh, it's in here just a couple of times, so shouldn't be too bad.
Comfortable with the wording on that page?
Yeah, the only, uh, the only additional comment that I have is, um, I think we asked last time, or suggested last time, that you, um, remove the attribution of the nice, um, kind of paragraph on what the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation is all about. But right now.
Got reworded in the other parts of the? If you go in, I talk about the gardens and the acreage in another part?
Yeah, so, well, so, um, I think it's great. The, the, the only issue is that without, without saying, this is the language from, uh, this is the language that Colonial Williamsburg uses to describe itself, um, all of a sudden it jumps from being a kind of third person, this is the story of the historic area, to first person. Um, it is the focus and resource for our education efforts and has a remark, so, um, I, I suspect you can leave it in there as a quote, but maybe just attribute it to the foundation rather than one of its presidents, if you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
That way, it's clear that it, um, is not the language of the comprehensive plan. It's a, it's a, it's a quote. Uh, and then also, it jumping back to first person, it makes sense. So I think that sentence that you've deleted could simply read the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation describes the historic area as, um, you know, its central feature or something. I mean, I, I don't know what the sentence is, but just attribute that language, those words, to the foundation rather than one of its officers.
And it, it still needs to be identified as a quote.
Yeah.
This page, I added some information.
Hyphenate world-class, please. World-class. Compound adjective.
Oh, I raised two world-class.
The last paragraph.
Just put two museums?
No, I like world-class. I just, it's a hyphen there.
Yeah, the, the, uh, as a staff member, even of the organization, of the division that runs those museums, I'm even confused about how we should properly talk about them. I think there is some language to clarify that on the website, but I think right now it's simply considered.
The museums.
The museum, the museums of Colonial Williamsburg.
The art museums of Colonial Williamsburg.
Yeah, and so, you know, they're in the same building now, um, and I think the language that's in here, uh, kind of comes out of an era where Bassett Hall was the only other thing in the historic area that, that that division ran, so I think I'd just leave Bassett Hall out of this, um, because that division also runs the Everard House and Weatherburns, and, and in a way that just doesn't matter. I think the, the important thing here is that the foundation operates the art museums of Colonial Williamsburg and, uh, the John D. Rockefeller Library. I think maybe that's what the sentence is.
Next page. It helps to drive the economy of the city. They provided the full-time and part-time employee numbers.
That's, that's the most recent?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that, that's a number that includes actual core staff and contractors. I mean, it's the total workforce is on that campus.
I think that's their full-time and part-time employees that are CW employees.
So it doesn't, doesn't include contractors? The bright view people and that kind of stuff. Okay, great.
I doubt it.
I'll, uh, I'll ask that question, but that's my understanding to verify.
I think that's a great question, and I wonder if that needs to be clarified in there, that it includes employees not independent or not contract services, um, because that, looking at that number, that's a pretty small number to, to do everything they do, so, um, I don't want to diminish the economic impact that those contractors bring.
Okay.
Uh, one more small thing, uh, restoration, um, in the fifth or sixth line down, again, shouldn't be capitalized.
Okay.
Way, 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 way back, restoration, the restoration was like the foundation. It was the official title, but it's, it hasn't been for a while.
In the tenth line, um, there's a sentence that starts this, um, can we, can we just clarify what that pronoun refers to and say this area? You've got either, either area or, yeah, so this area was expanded.
Um, I'm sorry, we didn't catch this the last time, but in the third paragraph, interpretation of the historic area is Williamsburg's most important attraction illustrated by Colonial Williamsburg credo that the future may learn from the past. So, uh, the motto just a few years ago or the mission, uh, statement or the, uh, the motto was, um, changed just a few years ago. And so, um, it isn't that anymore. Um, I think there's two choices. One is to put the, the, the new one in. Um, but another is simply to just stop the sentence at attraction. The interpretation of the historic area, hmm, or maybe just the historic area is Williamsburg's most important attraction, period. Colonial Williamsburg is dealing with changing demographic and public tastes. Um, it's probably a way to, to kind of finesse that a little bit.
On Colonial Williamsburg's website here, it still has the tagline underneath the script Colonial Williamsburg that the future may learn from the past. So.
The website is being updated.
No, 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 no. I mean, I said, I think, I think we don't need to mirror that, but, um, I, I actually searched for a motto. I got no other motto. But anyway, okay.
If we probably take it out, it'll probably stay more.
I think just take it, make it cleaner. Yeah.
If we take it out, it'll probably stay more current if it happens to change in a year. So, so like you're suggesting.
I think that's right.
To just take it out.
After attraction, period.
On that page? Sort facilities, updated the rooms and the suites and hotels, which I got from the foundation, the names.
Um, the autograph collection, well, I should confirm this. Um, my understanding is the autograph collection simply encompasses the lodge. It's part of Marriott's and, and maybe, maybe the inn, but I don't think that's right. I think it's just the lodge.
It's just the lodge.
And that's a Marriott thing, so.
Do we want to just take autograph collection out?
Yeah, that's a designation for Marriott.
Yeah, it's still the lodge, yeah.
Okay.
And of course, for profit should be hyphenated too.
We'll just put you on hyphens.
Yeah, I'll just, if I raise my hand, put a hyphen. Shields, is there an apostrophe?
I think Andy, you had a comment on the V I A, right?
There is.
On the via?
Yep.
Yeah.
Another way to.
Another way to say that.
And include, I think was a suggestion.
Yeah.
Which, where, where?
Four lines from the bottom of the left-hand.
Star carry between South England Street and Quaterpath Road via the, uh, the spa of Colonial Williamsburg.
Oh.
Be including.
Suggested and include.
And include.
Is that okay?
Via just didn't.
Yeah, that, yeah, that doesn't.
Yeah. Uh, there's also just a typo in that paragraph, um, the second line, monthly.
Yeah, I already fixed that.
Okay, great.
It's on the overhead even.
Oh, I should.
Yep.
Sure enough.
We mentioned the apostrophe and shields.
So I just searched Colonial Williamsburg website. It's never with an apostrophe. It's always just shields.
Shields, okay.
Wasn't sure.
Okay.
I mean, twenty.
That's another one, Merchant Square. I have to, I scratch my head about that one every time. Um, there is a, while we're on apostrophes, there's another it's, um, yeah, where did it go? I just had it. Um, the art museums of Colonial Williamsburg, which will hold its grand opening. Uh, it's the fifth or sixth lineup from the bottom. That's another apostrophe that should not be there.
Or would just, will hold a grand opening. No, it's, yeah.
I think it is, um, I didn't say this last time, but I think it is useful to explain what the support facilities are in the context of the comprehensive plan, because you could, you could imagine them being, you know, warehouses and storage facilities, but it really encompasses a huge range, um, of sites.
Under supports facilities, I basically updated the, uh, opening of the, uh.
Yeah.
Teams.
Yeah.
Cause I think it's scheduled now for next spring, the official.
I think that's right, yeah.
Everyone okay with that page now? I changed the planning issues to cooperative planning goals like we did in the previous section.
Yeah, that's great.
I changed to private ownership, I think was a comment we had at the last meeting. Then in Merchant Square, I got the information that from, uh, CW that they have more than forty restaurants and shops. So I added that to the text.
Yeah, that's great. Um, the, the one, the one edit you made, uh, has a, created a verb tense mismatch. So, um, that architectural character paragraph down at the end, the city's architectural review board works. We need to add an S there closely with developers. After deleting needs to, just work needs to change. Oh, you're, geez Louise, I gotta, I'll just follow the, I'll just keep my glasses on, sorry.
I caught that too after.
Yeah.
If you're okay with that, I'll go to the next page. And I took out the chapter ten economic development information, cause it's sort of confused.
Uh huh.
I think this section. Other than that, the rest is same as we saw last time.
And this one, you got a, an apostrophe in Merchant Square and other places you don't. So search and destroy, do one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's no apostrophe in the case of Merchant Square.
No apostrophe.
Yeah, it's a plural. Keith says yes or?
I'm sure.
No, no apostrophe.
No apostrophe, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure I'll see that in a, me and other spots in the rest of the plant.
Urge and replace.
Ready. That's okay. Then we're down to recommendations. Worded some of that based on comments. And I added the promote active collaboration between William and Mary and the city boards and staff based on the comment we had in the chapter, the recommendation for the university. And then I added encourage a mixed use of stores downtown to attract a cross-section of, of the community to include visitors, students and residents based on the comment we had at our last meeting. And based on, uh, the letter you received, I added the last paragraph to see if the commission would like to, the last bullet point under the foundation to see if you want to add that to the recommendations based on that, uh, letter the commission received about the Kimball Theater to keep the Kimball Theater open and Merchant Square as a functioning live performance art auditorium and movie theater venue. So that's something I think we need to discuss if we want to keep that in this section or possibly put it in the economic development section.
Or both.
Or both.
That, that piece, I mean, it, it's part of, you know, it's Colonial Williamsburg's, um, thing to work on, but that piece has come up also at EDA meetings and at the Tourism Development Fund meetings and things like that.
So is that wording appropriate or do we want to massage that wording or?
Well, the, the college is leasing it, what, for three, three years?
Three years, I believe.
So they're not, so the college is in charge of what's being done with it. I guess not movies, right? I mean, it's their.
Right.
Replacing PPK, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't want to say anything that's inconsistent with next three years, but, um.
Oh.
But they could still show movies there if they want to do.
The college could.
College could.
And we are, we are over one year into that three-year agreement. And so by the time this comes out and go through city council, probably are two years into a three-year agreement. So, I mean, I'm just trying to think of your perspective of, of having, of adding this in from the other comments, like this document will be the operative document supposedly like five years after that three-year agreement is over. I mean, obviously the slow process on PPK gives me very little hope that this is actually going to be in building there in that period of time. Um, but, um, and so for me, having it there means that if the opportunity presents itself that it is back in the hands of Colonial Williamsburg, then this is something that is sort of a, a flag that the city is, would be cooperative or meaningful to potentially private public partnerships with that, you know, with EDA or something like that to move in that direction. So I think it's more, do we want to leave this as a breadcrumb for the possibilities that come in the five years after a comprehensive plan relative to, we know this is a three-year contract right now.
Yeah, no, I thi- I think it's, I think it's important to say that. I agree with you. I just didn't want to say anything that's inconsistent with what we know to be the case, as far as the college goes. So if you're comfortable with that, I'm fine with it.
Um, I, I guess I'll, uh, dissent a little bit, um, on this one. Uh, it feels a little heavy-handed to me and a little like kind of lecturing the foundation, um, in a way that I don't think, um, is likely to be productive. Uh, it, it maybe if we feel a need to register our dismay that the Kimball, you know, closed down for a little while. I think there are other venues for doing that than the comprehensive plan. Um, I'm sympathetic to the communities. As a member of this community, I'm sympathetic to wanting it to continue to be a functioning theater. Um, and the current arrangement works for that. So really, it's just, it's almost like there's nothing to say really, because it is working as a theater. Um, and I think putting that in here seems to give it greater prominence than, than it really deserves. Um, we're concerned with land use. We're concerned with land use with respect to these two major institutions and kind of pointing to one parcel, um, not even a parcel, pointing to a single building. Um, I, this just doesn't feel quite right to me.
I agree with you. When I saw it, I, I thought sort of the same thing. This is kind of not really our venue for this.
Yeah.
It's more of a vibrancy, gay question, sort of.
Well, it is that and it's, you know, the, the people who, I'd like to call it our Kimball. But, uh, I don't, like, I think camp plan is probably not too specific.
And I, and I, I see that point. Um, I think that it could not, but it's possible for it to not be here where we have this focus on the foundation and that it can be maybe on the list of articulated opportunity sets of, you know, downtown vibrancy or economic development things, cause I, I know that EDA has this on their, um, on their agenda or on their, their radar or whatever, as something that, um, is part of the bigger picture of both of those things. Econo- downtown vibrancy and things that they are wanting to promote. Um, so I think it being part of comprehensive plans somewhere sense to me.
I wo- I would agree. I, I like it being in there somewhere, uh, because to me, it, it, it's a very community thing. Um, and having, if, if Merchant Square only became, uh, a place with retail restaurants and, uh, retail shops, I would think that that is a loss for our community. So having a venue that has an attraction like movies and live performances uh, on there, I think is important. Um, and I don't know that it needs to be in this section either, but I think, uh, encouraging something like that to stay on Duke of Gloucester Street really helps the local tie, uh, to there as opposed to, it's just a place with restaurants and some retail shops. It's, it, I don't think of it as my theater, uh, but I do think of it as an important part of our community. And I have no desire to hamstring them into having something there that isn't a viable business model anymore. But I think there should be a way to, to keep it relevant and somewhat income-producing for them. Because I'd hate to see it just become another catalog store where they made a whole bunch of rent off of it and.
So, so just from a land use perspective, what, suppose they did want to change it to, to retail. I mean, what? That's, that's a land use change, right? So it's.
They could do that because it, as long as the use is allowed in the B wind district.
So it's already.
It's unbusinessed.
Yeah, but I mean, but, but as far as the, I mean, they would have to reconfigure it. So that would be more of an ARB question. I'm, I'm just thinking about, I'm thinking about, you know, how, how, how significant it is from a land use perspective as far as whether it should be in the plan versus somewhere else.
If the foundation wanted to change the Kimball Theater, save first floor retail and had a business that wanted to locate in there, they have the right to do that. They might have to make a modification or two to the exterior, which requires ARB approval, but as far as changing the use, as long as the use is allowed in that district, they could do that. Parking wouldn't be an issue because it's in the downtown parking area, so you can change uses without providing additional parking. So the only reason I added this was because of the letter and I thought we needed to have this discussion on it. And my thought was the, this probably belongs in the Merchant Square section of the economic development chapter of the ordinance and not here, but I wanted to have this discussion now because.
And, and I think for, for EDA, I mean, both Jeffrey and I have, have served on, in that capacity. But with EDA as well as the Tourism Development Fund, I mean, this is an area of downtown vibrancy that I think has come before EDA several times. I, I feel comfortable, more comfortable there because part of it that we're talking about is the economic viability of it being a theater. Um, and so one of the things that EDA can work with is on dealing with grants or, you know, different kinds of partnerships that could potentially make that work. Um, so not having it here and being a part of the Merchant Square, part of the economic development section, I think is fine for me. One question though, I had about just the, the level of autonomy of not having it be a theater and having it be converted to something else. Frequently the Kimball Theater is referenced as the historic Kimball Theater. And I guess my question is that it would go to a land use thing, that if, if that theater had actually attained some sort of historic status, like had put themselves in as a registrar, then there would be restrictions associated with that. I mean, is, is that just simply a self, a self-proclaimed moniker, the historic Kimball Theater? Or have they actually registered as some sort of a nineteen twenties historic theater kind of thing?
I'd have to check in, but I think they could change the use.
Yeah.
And still be in historic structure.
Right.
Yeah, it's a contributing building to a national registered district.
Right.
Um, but that doesn't affect how it could be used. Um, I also think we're probably spending a lot of time talking about hypotheticals that aren't realistic. Um, but I do think the, the way to, if not solve this. But I do think the, the way to, if not solve this, to defer it to a conversation where it's a little more relevant. Is to take maybe those bottom two bullet points, the encourage a mix of stores downtown, and keep the Kimball Theater open to the economic development section.
Put him in the Merchant Square section.
Yeah, as a way of saying, here's the role that Merchant Square fills in the community, and this is the planning commission's view on how it can do that as well as possible. And here is how the city can support that work. Whereas here, it just sort of feels like, yeah, the foundation really ought to do this. Um, and I, I, uh, just the tone, you know, we're, we're working on kind of developing a more cooperative tone in the institution section. This is the part that feels less cooperative and more, um. I don't know, scolding or something, I mean, it's not scolding, we haven't written it in a scolding way, but, but it's, it's, um. I think it's not what we want here in this part of the document.
Yeah, I think the bottom, I was gonna say, if we're, if we're saying that the last one doesn't really rise to a land use level, then the one before also is.
Yeah.
You know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be. More, more like, you know, good ideas in the, in the Merchant Square section.
How would we feel if it said encourage a mix of businesses and stores downtown? Stores and businesses, cause above the movie theater, there, there are offices, and.
Mine, mine's above the craft house, uh, my office, yeah.
Yeah, so, I, I, and I, I think having those, those businesses and those other things, other than just stores, really contributes a lot, so, um.
Yeah, I think we can.
In fact, they, well, they just want stores.
I think we can refine the language a little bit, and, and, um, but I would, I would continue to advocate for moving those two bullets to the economic development section.
I'm, I'm good with moving, I just like them being there.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, I'm, I'm good with moving too. Having moved them off that page makes me, however. Eyeball that page a little bit more critically, in that there's, there are six recommendations for the ci- of the college, it's now, we're only down to four. And so in a, no, I mean, it's sort of in a casual read of this, I'm like, okay, well, there's enough gravitas on that column, I'm like, okay, that sounds good, I mean. Are there other things, and this is not something we need to sit here today, but in looking at this, um, draft, as we'll get it back from Carolyn for the draft for version three. If there are other pieces now that we've moved some things off, that you thought, oh, that could have been there, but there's already six things there, I'll hold off.
But I think the last one under, under the, under William and Mary could have a corresponding one promoted, because we need active collaboration between the city and, and CW.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of chapter nine, and as the rhythm of this pattern is that at each, at the end of each chapter, on our discussion, there's an open forum. So once again, I'll open up the floor if anyone wishes to come forward to speak on this chapter. Seeing no one who wants to come forward, um, Carolyn, you don't get a break, um, back to you.
All right.
Chapter four, this is the third time we've seen this one, so I think this is probably closer to.
Make any changes to page two. I did add the. Section. On High Street. From the other. Didn't change anything on. Added this one little section, although it, and I think Andy suggested in his comments to me. Although it continued to be the home of the college of William and Mary and Eastern State Hospital. Just not in your draft, that was a suggestion Andy had, and I put it in red on the overhead, so you could see how it.
Yeah, I just thought we were going from. Dismal to say here.
We'll, we'll mention that ampersand, William.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good. And, and everyone should run out and get their copy of, uh, Williamsburg Restored, where Carl Lounsbury goes into quite a bit more detail about how they didn't just roll up the sidewalks in seventeen eighty, that there continued to be, um, a lot of activity here. Interviewed on, on, on Hearsay today, by the way, for those of you that are Kathy Lewis fans.
That's quite good.
Yeah.
Tuned in, I know that voice.
On this, I added the, uh, additional years with the neighborhoods that we talked about at the last meeting. Thousand to twenty eighteen, High Street Riverside. Village Green. Village at Quarter Pass, City Green, Capital Landing Green, Parkway Towns, his other neighborhoods. To the list.
Hmm.
Is it officially Parkway Towns, or is it Parkway Town Homes?
Both ways.
It's both ways, got it.
I think the sign says Town Homes.
Does it, okay.
I'll underline it and.
I, I, I would keep it as Town Homes, even if there is some reference to it being Parkway Towns, I think. That's what I've always thought of it as anyway.
I fixed the William and Mary. But, ampersand. William and Mary, yep. Didn't make any changes to this page. Basically, it was basically cleaning up some liner. From the last meeting, we didn't have too many comments. I did add the color bar next to the streets. This overhead that corresponds to the graph on the right from your last me, from our last meeting.
Hmm, yeah, that helps a lot.
Yep. William and Mary again there. One thing I want to say on the pictures for all the corridors, I have hired, uh. A contractor to take pictures of the main entrance corridors. With a drone. So we should get some cool pictures.
Yeah.
I should have those probably by the end of September. So on Elaine's comment at the last meeting was, I took a picture of Richmond Road with no cars, and that wasn't a good, which made sense. So I figured, how do we get some nice pictures of the corridors? With cars in them, and, uh, so that's what, I've hired that individual to do that, and I think I've got twenty-eight corridors and.
And a, and a much safer way than you standing out in the traffic, we, I appreciate that.
Right, and should, and when the pictures come, if there happen to be a license plate, of course, you'll, she'll.
Right, right, right.
Get it out, or, or pick, or someone's standing, if you can see who they are, and it'll be like you see on that. But, uh, I think that'll help a lot to the chapter, and I've guided doing some other areas that will help us in the, uh, in the chapters we haven't seen yet also, so. For any of these pictures, it'll be new pictures come in on them. Basically, this was fixing William and Mary, and I see I got one right there. Still not fixed, right? So I'll go through and fix that, and I won't bring this chapter back until I get the pictures. Final, so unless anybody has any. Lafayette Street, uh, the city purchase and demolish this super eight hotel located between Lafayette Street and Richmond Road for future development to enhance the new development being constructed at Midtown Road. Infrastructure improvements such as sidewalk streets and intersection improvements will be discussed further in the transportation section. I think that was a comment, maybe Mr. Granger, you made it on this at the last meeting, sort of beefed up the wording on that to tell you where to look for it. Our recommendations. Based on our last meeting, I added the review special event regulations as it relates to bed and breakfast establishments. I think that was a comment at our last meeting from. The public. Will see this, the Williamsburg White House is applied for a text change. Special use permit to change to an inn, which would be ten rooms or less. So we may see this recommendation sooner than later, is, I'm just giving you an update on that.
So under establish, oh, I'm sorry, Andy, go ahead.
Say ten rooms or fewer?
Sorry?
Ten rooms or fewer? Less?
I couldn't.
And when you say ten rooms or less.
Yes, that's an inn.
Maybe ten rooms or fewer.
I think that this relates to like statutory language is what Carolyn, or code language is called, in the code, it's ten rooms or less.
Really?
Yeah. That's what she's, why she's stuck with that, yeah.
Right.
Um, in the, the one before that, um, review established implement, implement wayfinding signage needs. Or just wayfi- wayfinding signage, review established and implement wayfind, well.
Hmm.
It's a, it's, it strikes me as a little awkward.
It's proposing a study rather than proposing a.
Solution.
Yeah, yeah, so I think just delete needs.
I think it's a bit of both, I think we're looking at studying it all, just.
Yeah, I think the point is by.
But yeah, I fixed that.
Just deleting needs, you've got, review it, and then implement it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Do it.
And then the last one, regulations as they relate to bed and breakfast establishments.
Yeah. It's drunken white, you got it.
I have copy on my, uh, office desk.
Of course you do, of course I do.
I have, I have, I have Airted copies for the time.
Yeah, we have, we have copies at home as well, that's most definitely, I have several.
So that's all I have for this chapter.
Right?
Okay, then as we do, um, finishing that chapter, open the floor, if anyone wants to come forward, speak on chapter four, or if anyone wants to come forward to speak on anything else that we've discussed today, as this is our last open forum of today's meeting. Like to come forward, please state your name and, and address.
My name is Melody Loftime. My husband and I, Corey, live in the city on Adam Street, one-one-one Adam Street. I just want to say thank you to each of you for everything and all that you do to keep our community such a special place. It's not an easy effort, and just sitting in on even today's reviews on these chapters is an example of that. I'm just really thankful for your conscientious effort, each of you. Carolyn Murphy as well. Williamsburg isn't a special place by accident, it's because of careful stewardship, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward? Not expecting anyone, um, so, um, this concludes our work for August. We do have a, um, hearing on September eighteenth that has several items on it already, so we definitely will be having a meeting then. And then the following week, September twenty-fifth, is our regularly scheduled work session, and I assume that by a month from now, Carolyn will have more stuff for us to work on.
I'm hoping to have the neighborhood and possibly the housing section done, the first drafts for those for our, uh, work session in September.
Cool, and obviously, I know you're short-staffed at the moment, so we'll, we'll bear with, as what we need to have, but.
Make off with copy editing.
Go, go for it, okay, so if there's something else, then we are adjourned.